All right, good evening, everybody. Are we ready? I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay. I will call the Falkir County School Board meeting to order, and at this time, we're gonna ask Samuel Sanford, student at Falkir.
Yes.
If he would lead us in the pledge.
All right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we'll give Mr. Gorg a chance to take a seat. And Ms. Callahan, if you would, take your role, please.
Just take time for the role.
Very good. And I think we're ready to adopt the agenda.
I move that the school board add action item number 11C, a resolution supporting the lawsuit filed by the VSPA and Norfolk City School Board and approve the agenda as amended.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second that the school board add action item number 11C, a resolution supporting the lawsuit filed by VSPA and Norfolk City School Board and approve the agenda as amended. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, and the motion carries. At this time, I would ask that you recognize a moment of silence for Jan Sanford, a longtime teacher and reading specialist at Peterson Elementary. Jan passed away on August the 19th, and known her a long time. Our girls were in preschool together and went all the way through school together. Both of them were Jennifers. So we, thoughts and prayers are with Frankie and the Sanford family. If you would please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. We will go to announcements, and the first announcement, I'm not real sure about, the Liaison Committee. Do we know if we're meeting? Or did you?
As of this morning, there weren't any agenda items, but just the meeting has not been canceled, but right now they're on the agenda items, so it's potentially gonna be canceled.
Yeah.
To be determined.
To be determined. The school board, VOS Liaison Committee, for Wednesday, August the 28th at 5:00 is to be determined. There will be a Health Advisory Committee meeting Wednesday, September 4th at 8:00 PM in the Central Complex Building Conference Room. There will be a Special Education Advisory Committee meeting Wednesday, September 4th at 5:30 PM in the Central Complex Building A Conference Room. There will be a School Support Council meeting Wednesday, September 4th at 7:00 PM in the School Administration Conference Room. And the next school board meeting is Monday, what? September the 9th at 7:00 PM in New York Green.
You can, rich kids are playing at like.
[laughing].
She said there'll be a quick.
There will be a quick meeting. You ever hear of Tivo?
Not to say.
Yeah, we meet at 7:00, so we'll be good. Response to citizens' time. I don't believe there is any response, and at this time, we move to citizens' time. And as community involvement, it is an important component of a successful school division, and the school board welcomes public input. Please be respectful of all speakers and limit your comments to three minutes. Matters relating to personnel or personnel issues cannot be discussed, and I don't have a list. We don't have anybody.
Good job.
My citizens' time.
Okay. Then we will move right along.
And I'm gonna move this to somebody younger, year olds, wait.
We will move to reports and board members. Mr. Gorg, would you like to start?
Absolutely. Congratulations on a great start of school, great flash mob at convocation.
Yes.
Smart show.
You can't hide talent, that's why. Yeah, if you saw, you know how big a joke that actually was. The kids were great, and the other folks were great.
A couple things. The new school work policy that we passed about bring your own device has been very interesting, and I do look forward to hearing more feedback from internally here as well. If you all are getting any feedback about that, I'm getting feedback primarily from teachers and parents. Some positive, some not really liking the policy or maybe not even understanding it. So I think it's more of the latter. So, but the start of school's been great, and I'm also going to be accompanying Ms. Callahan on the 30th of September, it's upcoming, but at a VSPA Legislative Summit, and I'm very glad, too, that we put this new item on the agenda for tonight.
The resolution.
The resolution.
Yes. Okay.
Given the fact that the building committee meeting was canceled, the only thing that is to report, I realize it's from the old news that we had before, so until we begin and have further discussion, but there's a report.
Well, did you wanna talk about, well, I wanna bring up the tour of Falkir High School.
I was not there for that, so.
Oh, my land. I mean, I was hats off to every single person, Warren and Janice and everybody in the building committee school. It was outstanding. I couldn't believe it. It was a miracle.
And I think Nelson was an excellent choice for your Rising Tide Award because he's the head custodian there and did a great job. It was a great choice.
Takes a lot of work to bring that together like that, the two of us.
It was really a miracle. It was great, so that was great. The only other thing is, Ms. Callahan and I attended the showcase of projects throughout the state. I'm not ready to report on mine, but I'll do that the next time. But the only thing is the regional meetings, they are gonna have those in Loudon or in Dirkbeck City, and it'll be the first, fourth, or Tuesday. They, it was hilarious how they picked this, 'cause they went around trying to find a day when there no one had a meeting. Through the entire northeastern region, so it was forget it. They said certainly nobody meets on Monday. Come on. So anyway, that's it. That's fine.
Okay. Ms. Reardon.
Just congratulations on the start of the new year. This is the first year for me not having somebody going off, so it's kinda strange. I wanted to make everybody aware that the Brookside Community is gonna be having a 5K and a one-mile fun run on October the 26th, and it's going to benefit Auburn Middle School Library. So it would be great if you guys could come out and support it, because everybody can walk, I'm sure, even if you don't run it.
You can drive.
It's a great cause.
He said he can drive.
I can drive, I can.
There you go. And we need volunteers, you know, so feel free, and I would love it to see everybody there, 'cause I think it's a really, you know, this is our second one, that's benefited the schools, and so I think it's important that we show our faces.
Okay, okay. As Duke said, we didn't have a building committee, so we don't have any new information there. And I guess the big thing from personnel would be the turnover report, and we'll have that next month.
The only thing we forgot that's at the Finance Committee, and chime in Marcy or Brian, is John Munch presented this QSCAR report, the effects of sequestration on the interest-free bonds that we have. And it looks like, what did we figure?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five thousand dollars a year.
That's ahead.
So that's not terrible.
Not terrible, but it's a hit.
Well, it's not as bad as I was thinking it would be, but so that's the amount that we should look at, and this is a great report, John Munch.
Dr. Check, anything?
Just a couple of things regarding the first week of school. I thought it was, I gave it a nine out of 10 on the emails. Just a couple of what you'd expect, transportation issues, some scheduling issues in a couple of schools, and the traffic pattern at Falkir High School took some getting used to, but I think, you know, folks worked through it. Mr. Burp's here, and he's opened up the stairwells, that's turned out to be a popular move to help with the traffic flow. So things are moving right along. It was a very, very good week as far as weeks go, and I also wanted to mention two other things to the board. One, I think Karen sent out today the senior interviews, survey results, those are really good. It's really good information and something you can kinda pet yourself for. It's the feedback from the seniors, recent graduates, and two years out, feedback is very good in terms of appropriation for college and the education they receive at Falkir County Schools. And lastly, I wanted to mention the work that Ginger has done in terms of creating a timeline for an education foundation, which is something where I'm very, very interested in doing. I'm very hopeful of it, for it, and so Ginger has very graciously stepped right in and came into my office and said, one day, said, "This is something I'm really interested in, I'd like to help, and I'm excited about it, and can I help?" And I thought about it for a nanosecond, so. So we brainstormed, and really Ginger's done all the work, we've brainstormed some different ideas related to how we can do this and how we can sort of create a framework for the introduction of a sort of meaningful and purposeful education foundation in addition to the work that the Excellence in Education folks are doing. So as far as first steps go, I think we're off to a good start. I'm very hopeful that this community at large will embrace a foundation concept. And that's all I got.
That's great news. Yeah. Okay, then we will move to Ms. Kotoff and the Financial Management Report.
You have before you the financial report as of June 30th, but it was run as of August 5th. We still at that time hadn't received our final state sales tax information, and we still had payroll accruals through mid-August. When I look at it now, we were probably in the year with the operating fund of about 1.3 million, which is just slightly over 1%. So it turned out to be a little higher. Sales tax came in a little bit better than projected, so yeah, so we'll end up, so as senior staff, we're looking at our request list that we'll be bringing back to the board. Let's see, oh, the soft close on the financial system will be held next Tuesday, so then we'll start our state reports and have more solid numbers. Still a few minor adjustments, but overall, it's going very well. The food nutrition's the other one I just wanted to touch base in. As we had projected, it did go into fund balance. We have put items into place for next year to help mitigate some of that. Some of it had to do clearly with having less days of sales, of revenue coming in. But overall, it looks good. Any questions?
No one? Okay, thank you. And Ms. Downs will give us the Human Resource Department report.
Good evening. We, I'm happy to say for certified positions, we have three out of the four listed still, we're still recruiting for, having trouble with the middle school agriculture position, so any hints, send them my way. And then for classified, we are still looking to fill 16 positions, eight school nutrition. We have several custodians that opened up recently, so.
And a nurse also.
Yes, we did have a recent nurse, so.
Yeah, we have.
It was not a budgetary.
Okay. Okay.
Any questions this evening on recruitment?
Don't think so.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. All right, then we go to consent.
Madam Chair, I move that the school board approve the following. The minutes of the June 25th special school board meeting and work session, the July 8th school board meeting, and the July 22nd special school board meeting and work session. Also, the monthly bills and payroll, personnel actions, revisions to Section 1, the bylaws policy, revision to Section 2, community relations, Section 4, the support services and facilities policies, revision to Section B of the business policy 3 dash 3 dot 3, and that's the reporting per pupil cost, revisions to Section 6, the instruction policy 6 dash 11 point 10, charter schools.
I think it's 1 point 10.
Huh? Okay, I see another one, I'll say it another time. 6 dash 1 point 10, charter schools, and revisions to Section 7 of student policies with the exception of policy 7 dash 2 dot 3, school admissions, and the religious exemption 082613 dot 1, 082613 dot 2, 082613 dot 3, and 082613 dot 4.
Second. Motion and a second.
Phew.
That the school board approve the following. The minutes of the June 25th special school board meeting and work session, the July 8th school board meeting, and the July 22nd special school board meeting and work session, monthly bills and payroll, personnel actions, revisions to Section 1, bylaws policies, revision to Section 2, community relations, Section 4, support services and facilities policies, revision to Section 3, business policy 3 dash 3 dot 3, reporting per pupil cost, revisions to Section 6, instruction policy 6 dash 1 dot 1, charter schools, revisions to Section 7, student policies with the exception of policy 7 dash 2 dot 3, school admissions, and religious exemption 082613 dot 1 dot 2 dot 3 dot 4.
Now, is the charter school's point 10 or point 1?
Yes, it is.
Point 1 or point 10?
No difference. That's right. Any discussions?
See what happens when you skip a meeting?
That's right.
You miss math class.
All right, if there's no other discussion, then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, and the motion carries. We move to information items, and Ms. Warren, you're up.
Yes, thank you. Tonight before you is a request to grant easements to NVP Inc. on Falkir High School property next to the proposed Stonecrest development. Mike Williams is here representing the developer tonight. This did come before you at the Building Committee in May, May 23rd, and it came to the full school board in work session on 7/22. So you've had this information. The developer at your request did go back and look at the cost, the value of the easement, and they are valuing it at market value, assessed value, and the contribution for the dedication of right-of-way for the road, the sanitary sewer easement, and the utility easement would be $10,886. So Mr. Williams is here, if you have questions of him or of me, but we're asking you, we're presenting it formally for information tonight, since you've already work sessioned it, and asking that you move it to action tonight. Now, if you do, if you do grant approval, if you do move it into action and grant approval, the documents still need to be looked at by the attorney, they have not been, so we would not be asking you to sign something right now. It would simply be an intent for the developer to let the planning commission know that you've exercised the option of your intent, and after the attorney would look at the documents, then we would ask the chairman to execute them. But we didn't want to go through the expense for the developer of having our attorney look at the documents unless you wanted to grant the easement.
I think after we've had the discussion about moving it to fair market value and everything, I know I feel okay about it.
Yeah, the two properties that, it seems the true math is the combination of the fair market value between the two properties they compared. One of them was the high school, is that correct?
Right. The two, there are four properties there, the two largest, they've averaged the price. The easement's actually on the lower-cost property, so it really is in our interest to have averaged the cost of the two large parcels.
Yeah, I was wondering before, so I sit back and ask them to do a breakdown versus the two properties, and the average, you see which worked in our favor.
No, I'm good.
You're good, sir.
And Madam Chairman, the motion to move this is at the end of the information items.
Yeah. Okay, then I think we're okay.
Okay.
Okay, next up, Dr. Check.
Well, I've already given it basically, but I do wanna say this, 'cause I always danger of still picking out a few people. I mean, everyone did a tremendous job. It's such a huge undertaking, taking the school out from convocation, transportation, food service, all those things, there's so much involved, principals, the work that they have to do, custodians, everyone. So just a big thank you to everyone that was involved. It was a very smooth opening, and I've been involved in, this is my 25th opening, been involved in a couple awards, so good. So it's nice when you have really, really good people and things running smoothly. It calms a lot of fears on the part of parents and teachers and administrators, makes for a much more enjoyable experience, so thanks to everyone.
Ken, I just throw something in, I should've said it a while ago. I wrote up to Coleman, and you've got a chance to go again.
Sure, sure do.
Yeah, we should've done it in our reports, and the school looks fabulous with the new lighting.
They absolutely love it.
They did. So.
It really makes a difference.
A big thank you to all the staff that.
They did a great job.
Yeah, that worked to make that. Okay.
It's all done.
Okay. Then back to Ms. Kotoff, enrollment.
You should have, as you're spaced, the actual enrollment report. What it shows is it shows the program capacity, and if you remember, last fall, we had updated those. It shows the enrollment on day one, which is always light due to some of the soft openings at the elementary school. It shows day three, and then Friday, day five. It then compares it to day five last year, so you can see the difference. And then as a benchmark, it compares it to September 30th. Now, the September 30th number, we do report to the state, and some of our funding is based on the September 30th number. It also is the basis for our 10-year enrollment projections, which I'll be bringing to you later in fall after September 30th. I also included the percent capacity, so if you look at day five this year as a percent of program capacity, the first column of each school, you'll see where the program capacities are. I did look anticipating, and I'll just go ahead since I already did the research, I went ahead and looked at what the middle school redistricting did, and for the schools that we wanted to increase enrollment, it did, where we want to decrease, it did. Not quite always as much as we expected, and some of that has to do with the eighth-grade waivers.
You had those numbers really quick.
I do. So if you look at Auburn Middle School last year, it was at 98.2%.
But it was 98.2%, but what was our projected after redistricting?
I don't.
See, I have the files.
We talked about bringing that, but I didn't.
Right. I just looked at the percentages without the numbers, 'cause I saw the end result. When I moved the funding for students that transferred school, I did it based on actuals, not projected, because of the waivers, so I didn't maintain the projected amount. I just know that the actual last year, for instance, at Auburn, went from a 98.2% capacity on the fifth day to now it's 96.5.
Do you know how many of those are waivers, eighth grade waivers?
I, no, I can't tell how many are eighth, I just know eighth grade students. Frank's office handles waivers.
Right, and I would say the vast majority of students that were eligible for those took them.
Right.
Okay, so the true, or.
Yeah, that's right.
Not elevated.
Right, it is. So you'll see, really see the impact of it next year. I will say at Auburn, eighth grade is one of the grades that from seven to eight, the cohort method, actually increased. So not only are you seeing the waivers, but you're seeing additional population, that area which we knew was coming based on building permits and so forth.
Okay, and then Warrington, what are those?
Okay, Warrington, last year, Warrington was at 104.4%, and so why 96.9 seems high still?
Still.
It's, it is.
Also waivers, too.
It also does have waivers, they had the majority.
I'm sorry.
Frank!
I'm just sharing this.
That was Warrington, I do know when I actually transferred funds, Warrington had the fewer, fewer than anticipated transferring up to other schools. Any others?
Yeah, what's Kettle Run? Have you taken a drive?
Yeah, I know. Were they, where were they last year?
Last year, they were at 92.9%. Janice and I also spoke as we reviewed this and looked at it, and she can speak better than I can, but I will tell you that Kettle Run, maybe not as fast, but Kettle Run is built, the core is built for 1,500, it is built to expand, and they also have some other ability based on how the school was built with the teacher work centers to have more flexibility. So as percentage of program capacity, they probably can get the most or even more than some of the other schools based on their design.
As is Auburn.
And the principal would tell you that, too.
Yeah. Also, I think last year, I know Sandra, you had said that the better the percentage to, higher percentage would work better academically for what could be offered at the school as well.
So what's the trigger for, the capacity's 1,200, you said it was built for 1,500?
The core.
No, the core.
Cafeteria, not the classrooms.
Was built for 1,500, but classroom size was 1,200, so it's built to add another pot of 300 students.
All right, so those, all three, but all three high schools have the same measure, they'll measure based on student capacity, the classrooms, not cafeteria, other things?
Correct.
Okay.
And program capacity versus building capacity, last year when we looked at it, we did look at a school, whichever school it is, when they have inclusion program, they have those, the per pupil enrollment goes down. So it could be, I think we used 10 to 1 or 8 to 1 as opposed to 24, 25 to 1 per class. So if you, to get, gain more flexibility in a school, if they have a couple of self-contained programs, you could simply look at maybe moving those, and then the program capacity goes up immediately from 8 to 1 to 24, 25 to 1.
You're talking about special programs?
Yes.
For all things being equal, if you were to add a space at Kettle Run High School, it couldn't exceed space for 300 students, based on cafeteria, gym, and all those things.
Well, we say that yes, but we know that at Cedar Lee, they're, they, we've added
one to exceed their core facility, and that's why some of the issues that they have at Cedar Lee.
Okay.
So they have, we've built, and their capacity is actually more than what their core was designed for. So you get hallway issues and things like that.
Sure. All right, thank you.
Well, and before Kettle Run was built, Falkir and Liberty were.
Eighteen hundred.
Eighteen hundred.
Learning cottages.
But the hallways were crowded.
Learn, the learning cottage.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure if I reported on September 30th again, but like I said, not far after that, you'll be receiving the 10-year enrollment projections based on this. I will also say that, as I've mentioned before, five years ago, we had the largest in a 15-year period of births. So I, of course, wanted to look at saying, you know, where are they? Because overall, our enrollment projection is down from last year to this 34 students. So when I looked at that, we have been, at one point, we were at 108 and 100%, 10% of births coming, showing up at kindergarten, and it has gone down to the point where, when I did my enrollment projection last year, I was using only a 98.4% of births showing up. But still, we had this huge, I mean, over 800 births five years ago. When I added up the kindergarten this year, we're of the 826, I expected 813, and only 743 showed up so far. Not that some won't show up after Labor Day, but that's an 89.9% cohort from birth to kindergarten, which is the lowest we've seen in, I don't know, when.
Is that it?
To me, it's also an indication of fewer incoming people and people leaving, and yeah, so it's both. First, we were seeing fewer people come in, and then, but we were still seeing about the same kids born right in at school, and now we've actually fallen below.
Now, this 1457 program capacity for Falkir High School, does that include the 1979 building that's sitting up there in the corner? Does it include capacity?
I don't think you.
I can't remember. It was done, we were working on Falkir at the time, and I did both. I'll have to go back and see which number this is. I can't remember.
There was an increase at Pierce?
There was. Now, I will tell you that when we did program capacity for Pierce last year, what we found, I actually walked the building, not that that means anything, but some of the classrooms in the older wings truly are smaller, and when we looked at what the state guidelines were for classrooms, it truly was under that. So we made an allowance for that, so can you get 26 kids in one of those classrooms? Maybe. I mean, when they have to bring their own little cubby because of the way it's built, we, like I said. Maybe, I mean, when they have to bring their own little cubby because of the way it's built, we, like I said, we backed off on that. But saying that, they have seen an increase, because last year, they were only at ninety-six point six percent. So, they have seen an increase.
Is there a development down there?
Yeah, that's just one.
Sure.
They picked up fourteen students from day one to day five.
And I don't believe that there are soft opening for kindergarten, so I think that, no, so I think that is truly.
But they do have learning cottages, and you don't include that in.
I do not, this is bricks and mortar.
So, they do have learning cottages there, so they can accommodate a little more.
For travelers.
Trailers, yes.
It's called spade a spade.
Must be spade.
Temporary, yeah.
So-called temporary.
Okay, alright. Questions anybody?
No.
Alrighty. Ms. Downs, personnel policy five dash three point five.
Yes, tonight, I'm asking, requesting that you review the revisions to five dash three point five, non-school employment. We have revised this policy to eliminate the statement that requires employees to report outside work, outside the school division to us. And that is the only revision to the policy, that sentence has been eliminated.
Well, and we made this decision last year.
Yes, we did.
But we just never formally fixed it.
And this will be moved, if you approve, to the September twenty-third, twenty thirteen school board meeting. Yes.
Okay. No, it's great, okay. Thank you. Alrighty, Dr. Mitchell, you're up.
Okay, there are thirty-four policies in front of you, I'm sure you won't let every single one. But these thirty-four policies, these are the sections, they call sections or articles at this point, Articles Three, Four, Five, and Six of the instructional section, and they complete the restructuring and revision for all of the instructional policies in the policy book. There are no major changes, in my opinion, to these, but I did want to highlight four that I thought might warrant some attention, and I can go over these, and then you can ask me questions about any of the others that you'd like. We've talked to Ginger, and we're not going to be asking you to vote on these on September ninth, rather, at the work session in September or even October if you want, so that there's a full month out there, since there's so many, that you can take a look at them. The first one I want to highlight is the family life education policy. And I just wanted to bring this to your attention because there has been a change in the state guidelines and that they allow not only a community involvement team to help review the books, but the health advisory council to do them as well, so I think that's actually a good idea. Cheryl has suggested a change, and it's in the second section, and it is simply adding an and/or, so we're just, you're changing the conjunction to and/or, so that you can include community involvement team and the school health advisory board. That way, we could include administrators or clergy or medical professionals and things like that. So, we're changing that to and/or, and I've already made the changes on my notes here, and we'll make that change in the final, if that's okay with you. Any questions about that one? That's really what I needed to say.
That was a good catch.
This is pretty much a boilerplate what the state wants you to have. The next one I want to highlight is, is six dash four point four. It is graduation verified credits and SOL requirements. This policy was pages, it's already very long. But it included, for many years, all of the diploma requirements for every diploma that we gave. And as I, and every year, we were changing it because the state changes diploma requirements. Some years, we had the advanced technical one, the career technical one. So, we, we decided to take all of that out because it's in our program of studies every single year. And program of studies, that's really the instructional regulation manual for high school. It has, and we have to do that annually, and it goes to every child in, you know, and parent in their hands. So, that, I think, will keep us in compliance with putting graduation requirements in every parent's hand. It's also on our website everywhere. Just to have a policy, when a policy should be a little bit more static than having to change it every year when the diploma requirements change. So, that has been taken out. And then, the only other changes are the legislative updates that are required. Questions about that? Okay, the next one I want to highlight is in Section Five, and it's on homework. This is very similar to what we've done before, but we added a section, I've received some requests over the years to have some guidelines about amount of homework. And it's really hard to do that because it really does depend on the content, the, the student, the time of the year, whether you're on four by four ninety-minute time block or some other time. However, I have had suggestions that we could include the National PTA and National Education Association's guidelines, and that is the ten-minute rule, and a lot of schools use this, and it's ten minutes times the grade that you're in. So, if you're in second grade, you have twenty minutes, and you're in twelfth grade, it's two hours. So, we put that in, and it's just reads as a guideline. It says here, the amount of work will vary depending on content time of year, course expectation. And that is a suggestion that has come to us from parents and teachers and others, it's simply a guideline, it's not a requirement. So, that's the only change, everything else is the same. And finally, oh yes, question?
Yeah, I'm gonna look for clarification on number seven of those guidelines of that one. But the first sentence is a little bit confusing.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So, maybe we can just put something in there to make it a little.
Sure.
Yeah, excessive homework, absence of homework should be avoided. I just don't know where that refers to.
Okay. It's, yeah, because it talks about the fact that homework is.
You should have it.
You have it, but we'll work on that.
Great.
You want it just a different wording?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
The other one I want to highlight is six dash five point seven. And I mention this because, those of you who remember the challenge we had about the movie, this is the policy that drove that. And I just wanted to bring it to your attention, we haven't changed anything here, but we are going to change the form a bit that goes with the regulation, which does not appear here, you don't see that here. But it's simply this, and I can send it to you. We're simply going to be sure that, Dr. McGwin can speak to this, add to ask whether the teacher has offered an alternate assignment. That question isn't on the form. It's a practice that we, we do, but that question is not on the form. That's the only thing missing, because frankly, that process has worked very well. It has been tested three or four times since I've been here, and it's worked very well. So, we're just going to change that one little thing on the form.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
This is good.
So, do you have questions about those or anything else that you see? And certainly, if you don't have any now, you can certainly send them to me, and we can change.
I have a few, but I'll send them to you, and then it's not the biggest stuff I didn't understand.
Okay. Anything else? Anything else?
Anybody?
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. If not, then we move to Ms. Warren again, crisis emergency management plan.
That was a lot of reading.
Had a lot of help. Is there a, like a.
If you want to just, would you rather have a remote or do you want Louis just to switch it?
Okay.
You want a remote or?
So, tonight, we're going to do the annual review of the crisis management plan. And if we go to.
Thank you.
We're gonna, I'm gonna do a plan update to tell you where we are with the actual plan, which you have in your hand. A plan, a general plan review, and then just some safety updates. The plan update, as you know, we, I have, as we reviewed this in the past few years, I promised you that we would engage in a process to update our plan because it was out of date. And a lot was going on, and finally, this year, I fulfilled my promise. I am no longer deficient in reviewing that. And what we did to do that was, we put a committee together, we met in this room, and I'm telling you, I was just overwhelmed by the support we got on this committee. We had the sheriff's office, fire and rescue, the town of Warrington, principals, we had elementary, middle, and high school administrators involved, support personnel, transportation facilities, myself. And they, they came, and we met, and we went through the plan, and did rewriting and revising. The plan is essentially the same as it was before, I mean, it was already a comprehensive plan, it's just been reorganized, and I'll get to that a little bit. But I was just, we, the sheriff's office, we had three or four or five sometimes of them here at every meeting. And they've been great support and made great suggestions, and so I think that's been very positive. We also took it to Administrative Academy, and we gave it to the, all the school administrators, principals and assistant principals prior to, a week before Administrative Academy. And then we discussed it at the academy, and then we gave them time, they had time to review it, because they also, it's the basis of their school plan. And so, we've gotten some feedback from them and made some changes, and then we've sent it to you. And you have a copy of it, and you may have some things that you would recommend we change that we can talk about later tonight. But it's been a really good process, I think that we have a better product as a result of all the participation that we have. It's been very overwhelming. The plan is reorganized and updated, it includes legislative changes. So, we had a number of legislative changes, certainly over, you know, the, the state's been engaged in a process over the past many months, since December, to really make some changes to school safety and security. And those things were implemented July one, and this plan has those changes in it, so they have been incorporated in the plan. It also adds the NIMS, the National Incident Management System, as the standard for managing our emergencies. If you recall back in two thousand and seven, when we did that regional exercise with the State Department of Emergency Services, they used NIMS then, but it's never been written into our plan. And all, all governmental agencies use that standard, it's a FEMA and Homeland Security standard that they recommend, and there is NIMS for schools. And so, that's what we've written into this plan, is the use of that, that structure in managing emergencies. It does update the National Terrorist Alert System and our responses for sec, for alerts. As you may recall, it used to be yellow, orange, red, and now it's imminent and elevate, elevated and imminent. And so, we, for example, our field trips may change depending on what the level of the alert is. And so, that's been updated in our plan to match the National Terrorist Alert System. It updates the crisis management team roles to be consistent with the NIM standard. And we had, that only required a few changes, but it did require some changes in the titles and the responsibilities. And, and we also added a crisis management, a division-wide crisis management team, so that's a new addition to the plan. So, we did keep the basis of what we had, but we built on it, and we feel like what we've done has strengthened the plan. We do share the plan with local law enforcement and emergency services. That is a new requirement as of July one, but we already had them on our committee, and so they already had our plans. So, we, and we've been doing that anyway, they, we've been giving them a copy of what we have. But now, they know our plan better than ever because they helped us develop it. So, that's the plan, and that's what you have in your hand now. So, I'm just gonna do a quick overview of the crisis management plan. The Virginia code and your policies require that we have a written school crisis, emergency management, and medical emergency response plan. So, we call it the Crisis Management Plan for short. It's defined as those essential procedures, operations, and assignments required to prevent, manage, and respond to a critical event or emergency. So, that's what the code states that we need to have developed in our crisis management plan. The crisis management plan, our plan complies with the Code of Virginia requirements. It provides for consistent division-wide terminology and responses. So, we've done a plan that all of our schools use, we use the same terminology. When we call a lockdown, we know what a lockdown is, when we call a shelter in place, we know what a shelter in place is. So, we've used consistent terminology, and we use clear English, clear language in, when we talk about our emergencies. Law enforcement agencies have gone away from using codes over the years, and we've done that as well. That's okay, you're good. It is an all-hazards plan, Code of Virginia requires that we have an all-hazards plan. And so, just kind of giving you some examples of response procedures that we have in our plan. It really does go from accidents to weapons. So, it's not from A to Z, it's from A to W. But it includes natural disasters and severe weather, hurricanes, tornadoes, blood, earthquake, medical emergencies and deaths, other types of incidents, fire, explosion, gas leaks, intruders, violence, violent acts or threats on school property, and off-site procedures as well, such as for activity trips. It establishes many communication alternatives, and we have worked on this over the past few years to bring methods of communication with the public and internally. So, we have systems that will communicate with each other, our staff during an emergency, but we can also communicate with our families so that they know what's going on. Of course, we have our website, we have an information line, which is used a lot when we have a weather emergency, for example. Two-way radios, that's one of the things, we've had the eight hundred megahertz radios, we put on our buses a number of years ago, we have them in all of our schools. But we also been working on the two-way radio systems that the schools have that are just school-based systems that just communicate with themselves. And we've worked with the schools to try and get those a little bit more standardized over this past year. And then we have our auto notification system, e- notify, local television and radio. And we still have our old-fashioned telephone tree because there happens that that may be working. The plan establishes crisis response teams for each school. As we said, those roles and responsibilities are related to the National Incident Management System standard. And now, we have one for the school division. So, we will be meeting very soon with our school division team to kind of refine and develop how we would respond in an emergency because that is a new addition. It signs responsibilities, and it does require training and practice, which we do, and we're constantly working on how to improve that. Drills, one of the things that was changed July one is the way the drills were updated. Fire and evacuation drills, they didn't change, we do one for each of the first four weeks of school, and then we do them every month thereafter. And they can, we can do them more often, but that's the minimum. Lockdown drills changed, we were required to do one lockdown drill before July one, now we have to do two each year, and they've also specified that they need to be done in September and January. We do a shelter in place drill each year. We do an earthquake drill, and we do it in October, we do it when they do, when they have the great southeast shakeout drill. And we do it on that day, and that, this year, that will be on October seventeenth at ten seventeen, ten seventeen, October seventeen, in the morning. So, that's when we will be doing our earthquake drill. Tornado drill, we, we do two, I, I don't, that's, I think, unique in that. We usually do one in September, and we started that because it also gave us an opportunity to use our radios. We wanted our schools using our eight hundred megahertz radios. And then we also do one in March with the regional drill that's done, well, the state of Virginia does a drill in March, and so we do it about mid-March when we do that drill. And then bus evacuation drills are required in September and February, they're required the first thirty days of each term. They're required the first 30 days of each term. So that's kind of an overview of our plan. But there are some safety issues I just wanted to bring to your attention that we have completed. The entry buzzer systems, Falkir was the last one to complete. And that was done for the opening of school. We've had, we're tweak, been tweaking that a little bit, but I think that they're locked down now that that's working well. And it does require all visitors and staff to check in at the main office. So we are requiring that at all of our schools now. We, as I mentioned, we're partnering with our public safety officials. They served on our committee. And, and I did mention that that committee's not done. We see that as an ongoing committee. And in fact, we have a meeting next week. Because there are sections of our plan that we still feel like need to be enhanced. Training is one of them. That section, we kept it from the old plan, but we do want to improve that section. And there are other things that we want to improve on. And so we're going to continue to meet at least quarterly and our meeting is next week. We're continuing the School Resource Officer Program. We don't have, we still have an opening. They're still trying to fill one position. But they are approved and budgeted for each middle and high school. And of course, they help support the elementary schools. And the Sheriff's Office has also committed and we've asked our administrators to invite the Sheriff's Office deputies into the school, maybe to have lunch, maybe to have breakfast, walk the halls. And Sheriff's Department has said that they would love for their deputies to be doing that. So we're hoping that we can get this kind of community policing between our schools and the Sheriff's Office. We encourage, we are requested and we encourage the use of our schools as training sites. Because we, the Sheriff's Office wants sites to train. And they also want to be able to respond to our schools. And so they want to know our floor plans. And, and they do have electronic copies of all of our floor plans. That's something that we provided to them a couple of years ago. And we've been using those floor plans to actually, if you've gone out, the community may have noticed the big door numbers on, at the doors of our schools. That is to aid in response so that they now know if they're responding to the front of the school, the side, the back. They'll know which area of the school they're responding to so that they can respond more quickly in an emergency. So we've worked with them in many ways. It's been very positive. Safety audits, we still do the safety audits. We do the online audit. That's being conducted right now. The Department of Criminal Justice Services released that in early August. And our principals have till September to respond to that. And then we respond as a division as well. And, and then of course, we do the onsite assessments, physical assessments. And this is new this year. We've always had a guideline from the state of Virginia and we followed that, but we've kind of added to it. I just saw it today. I said pending release, but actually I've got an email sent from the state on Friday. I just saw the email today. And so they have now released the guideline that we must use in assessing our schools. And so that's what we will be doing starting this year, is using the DCJS and the VDOE collaborated on that. And then this year, we're also required to have a school safety audit committee. I've mentioned that, but we haven't. They will be reviewing all of our school safety audits. So they can't really come together until those safety audits are done. But Dr. Jack, who, I'm hoping that we'll use some of the people that serve on the Crisis Management Planning Committee and then enhance it with double participation as well. And then this is something that I also promised you and we worked on, took a little longer than I'd hoped. But we do now have information on school safety available on our website. And this is the main page of that school safety. If you go to the main page of our website, on the left-hand column, there's a link that says "school safety." And if you click on that, it takes you to this page. And the, on the, on the right-hand side, those are links to other information. And then some of those pages are new. Crisis management planning, for example, communications, visitors, those are new. But some of them are pages that were already on our website. We just weren't linked to school safety. Frank's Behavior and Counseling Services, it takes it to his page. The safety-related policies, that's a new page. And it now has all of our safety-related policies. So if, if a parent wanted to go to look at what kind of policies do we have related to safety, they're just, they're linked. Each of the policies is a link right there. So the Town of Warrington, the Sheriff's Office, Fire and Rescue, they all said, yes, we'd like to have a link on your page. And so we did that. So if you go to it and if you have any recommendations for any changes or additions, we'd be glad to take care of it. So I believe that's it. Are there any questions or?
Oh, good, good.
The door numbering is just really important to law enforcement.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I think before we move to action items, we need a motion.
Madam Chair, a motion that the school board move information item 10A to action item 11D for consideration for approval this evening?
Second. Motion and a second that the school board move information item 10A to action item 11D for consideration for approval this evening. Any discussion? Not all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries and we move to action items. First one, acceptable computer and network systems and resource use.
I move that the school board adopt policy 6 dash 3.11, acceptable computer and network systems and resource use.
Second. Motion and a second that the school board adopt policy 6 dash 3.11, acceptable computer and network systems and resource use. Any discussion?
I just think there, I have concerns, but like everybody else, I think you can move forward and give it a shot. And see what happens. You can always go back and modify it. And I have 100% faith in our principals to manage that appropriately. So thank you again.
I will just say, I've gotten comments like Brian has and most of them have been, what in the world are y'all thinking? Until I talk it through and then, okay, makes sense.
Almost every concern I've heard expressed, I know, has happened before BYOD. And, and that's the thing that's very reassuring to me because now it's out in the open. It's addressed more directly in our policies. And I actually think we're in a better place going forward than where we were before. And I've had that conversation with a number of parents that have contacted me. You know, when they get into the explicit, well, what about this? And yes, we considered all of those issues. And here's what we know about what's happened over the last couple of years in the same area. And, you know, the whole issue of pictures in locker rooms, that's happened.
Many times. The magazine as well.
Yeah. So, you know, I think, you know, it's easy to address those concerns. And I do believe we learned a lot this year though.
Yeah.
Word flow.
I say I will.
At least we have something.
Yeah. Okay. If there are no other comments, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries. We move to policy 7 dash 2.3, school admissions.
Madam Chair, I move that the school board approve the revisions to policy 7 dash 2.3, school admissions.
Second. Motion and a second that the school board approve the revisions to policy 7 dash 2.3, school admissions. Any discussion?
I just quickly read it here and it's, it's very much better than it was last time I read it.
Right. Very much better.
We incorporated everything that we could incorporate in the code into this policy. And there is a drafted regulation that will go to Dr. Jack that includes the, the affidavits that will be required and the power of attorney. And there will be a subsection D as part of the attached regulation that will address it. So, and then I will carry forth and meet with Department of Social Services to work out inter-agency coordination on these issues.
And they're aware?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes. We've had several conversations, but now we've got to get into the nitty-gritty between the schools and, and the social services. But our regulation will be going to Dr. Jack for his.
I agree. This was a lot, a lot.
Yeah. I will make a prediction. This may not be the same, the last time you see the school admission policy this year. Because there are some other issues related to that that are coming up. Unrelated to kinship care, but related to school admissions that may require us to bring this policy back to you again.
Right, keep it tight.
This is one of those, this is one of those kind of changes that has every school board attorney in the state rubbing their hands together. Because they're, because they're all going to make money off of the really legitimate questions that come out of this. And this is a great example of that. This, this ambiguous, fuzzy policy that requires tremendous amount of betting, so that's good.
Well, and if nothing else changes relative to where the code is today, it does sunset in 2016. So we'll be removing this.
Is that right?
Yeah, unless something changes between now and then, which was a very interesting feature of the whole thing.
Why would you put a sunset on that? In case it's bad.
I guess in case it really might.
Well, it must have had a lot of.
Opposition.
Yeah. Agita and that would be like, yeah, okay.
I guess they gave a natural out in case it really goes south, so.
Well, the stuff he did is excellent. If, whoever works on it, it's really.
I approve.
What else can we think of?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say no. And the motion carries. And we move to the lawsuit filed by VSBA and Norfolk City School Board.
Madam Chair, I motion that the school board adopt the resolution supporting the lawsuit filed by VSBA and Norfolk City School Board to declare the opportunity educational institution legislation unconstitutional.
Second. Motion and a second, the school board adopt the resolution supporting the lawsuit filed by VSBA and Norfolk City School Board to declare the opportunity educational institution legislation unconstitutional. Any discussion?
I totally support this resolution.
I, I mean, it's Article 8 of the Virginia Constitution, which is granting, you know, grants local school boards the authority to make these changes. It gives you two years, two years of a school in a certain situation to allow it to come out. You report it one year and you have less than one year to turn it around. Every piece of education that's going to occur in that school is going to be focused on getting those kids tested correctly. It's not going to be uneducation. I just, number one, I just think that's a bad policy, a bad form to have that done. And number two, I think if not in the word of the law, the intent of, of the Constitution of Virginia, I think it strips away the rights of local school boards and their authorities and what they've been, you know, tasked with, so.
I think it was bad from the get-go. I'm wondering what, do you know anything of why Norfolk took this forward?
Well, they have a, they're going to be impacted by it. And I think they got a, they just, they found a willing partner with VSBA and likely so. But what I, what's interesting to me is that I'm not, the State Board of Ed has a China ban. I'm David Foster, that I know of, hasn't said anything about this. So I'm wondering where they, where they fall on this issue. VSBA or probably 90% of the school boards in the state are going to watch and guess, but a lot of school boards are going to be adopting this. But I just wonder where the state board falls on this since they're the ones that are granting the authority to establish school division, or school boards. It's just, I don't know. But I've, I've not heard anything from them. It's interesting.
I think Alexandria was a school. Won't they also, that will come under jurisdiction?
I think that's why school divisions.
Peter Burkhart is a role.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right. If not, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say no. And the motion carries. And we move to Falkir High School.
I move that the school board grant to NVP Inc. on Falkir High School property, a right-of-way dedication for a turn lane and sewer and utility easements for the proposed stone crest development.
Second on that.
Motion and a second that the school board grant to NVP Incorporated on Falkir High School property, a right-of-way dedication for a turn lane and sewer and utility easements for the proposed stone crest development. Any discussion?
But, but this is pending review or?
Attorney has to look at it. Give his blessing on it, change whatever language he wants to or whatever.
Yep. Okay. Then all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say no. And the motion carries. We move to round table. Mr. Blain, you got anything?
No.
Okay.
Good.
Dr. Mitchell, no? Good.
I just wanted to say I enjoyed the Conference on Education that I attended with Ms. Wall. And I think the best advocate that I saw there for public schools was a junior in Washington County Public Schools. And I'm sure Cheryl would agree with this. She was a junior in high school. And I mean, she just spoke beautifully. And you talk about a great advocate for a public school system, she was. And I think she has actually, they've asked her to speak at several different things. I attended several other workshops, Bring Your Own Device. And the one thing that they were doing really differently was actually allowing less time in the halls for you to be on your device and more instructional time. And they didn't seem, they, they didn't seem to be too concerned about children who didn't have, children who didn't have devices. Children who did, I mean, you know, they could use their textbook or they could go online. As we know, many of our textbooks offer online resources. And so they were just allowing those who could to do that. And they said so far, it's worked out well. So we'll see. I thought that seemed a little unequal myself.
They also didn't allow elementary school.
No, they didn't.
Sure, right.
Yes, they didn't. And I also attended, so you've got an iPad, now what? And the thing I found really interesting about this, they taught their teachers, they gave all of their teachers iPads. You know how we have our Learning Tree carts with our laptops? Well, they have carts with iPads and they just took them to, to each class. And they, they, they reworked their Title II funds in order to obtain these iPads. And they thought 30%, about 30% of their teachers would be on board. 87% of their teachers are on board. And they have all of these wonderful free applications that the students love, like Khan Academy for math. I mean, almost every core instructional course has a great free online resource. So it was really interesting and the teachers loved it and hopefully I don't, oh, look at.
I was going to say that.
The worst title is Lewis's mantra.
Okay. Lastly, the Affordable Care Act, which you've got to remember, this was July 23rd. And I'm sure it's totally different now, but Brad King. It's very interesting. And I sent notes to Marcy and to Janelle. And I would be glad to share any of those with you. And then I just wanted to ask you two questions about our educational foundation. I assume, but I hope rightfully so, that you, you want the foundation totally separate from the school board.
Yes.
Okay, good. And the other thing, I'm going to start calling between 9:10 and 9:17 some of these people. And these were just ideas I had for names. But I tried to reach different districts, you know, for some former school board members from different districts to get on board. So they could possibly, if, if they weren't interested, they might give me a name of somebody who would be interested in that district. So if you have names, any of you, please send them to me. And I'll be glad to contact the people. Or if you feel like you would rather contact them, absolutely do that and we'll move forward.
We have, I'll say on this, we have a, an offer from the Prince William County, the people who formed the Prince William County Foundation to help us in any way that they can.
Theirs is phenomenal.
Well, yes, I believe Dr. Jack.
I know the person who started it and so.
Yes, and Dr. Jack gave me some information. I do believe that they're on a huge scale and I think they have funds that we are not going to.
You think they can be big.
Okay, okay, Dr. Jack.
Ginger did send an email about the website. Ginger did send an email about the website.
Oh, yes, Nancy.
And I, if anybody has anything.
I got to look at it. I mean, there's a lot.
We're going, we're going to meet tomorrow, but that doesn't mean, you know, we're just going to look at it and see what we can do to clean it up a little bit and make it more user-friendly.
Okay. Maureen, you have anything?
I do not think.
Okay.
I just have two things. We were going to talk about take your legislator to school.
Oh, yes, we were.
What I think, I've always focused on lobbying them to have them vote for things I want on public education. And I, and I was reading some things, I thought that's, that we should do that. We should have them interact with our students. And Bill Davidson comes to me, Mr. Davidson, although Falkir High School certainly. But I, I, I think we, nothing inspires anybody about education more than me and being with students.
I agree. That's better than having, I don't want to say names. Because one of them, we arranged, you know, a couple of years ago to go to Seattle, and it was awful. It was like pulling teeth to get the conversation where it needed to be, and it wasn't a good use of time.
Well, I think, yeah.
So, if we have something like Bill, who had his class, I mean, his class is just phenomenal.
Right.
For somebody to see.
Right.
Yeah. So that would be a good idea.
Well, and the other thing, I think of Mr. Freeman over at Falkir High School.
Oh, yeah.
Between him and Mr. Davidson. And, but also to have, give an opportunity for students to ask them questions, if there were political science classes, whatever, classes that could have an art, ask them questions.
I mean, so we could send invitations, is all we can do.
Right. I mean, it's going to be difficult to get in there, but we, we just haven't done it so long, and we have so many outstanding things going on in the school division.
I bet you Michael, we would be interested.
Oh, he would, I'm sure.
He, not, not only, not only did he attend the competition, but he also attended Dr. Jack's presentation up at Marshall, when he had the pocket, he was there as well.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I don't know, where do we go from here? I mean.
We reach out to him.
Yeah, we just meet here.
There's a date, and then we work with the date once we get it.
Well, we would, we would have to work with Sandra.
Right.
On, you know, being sure that the date would work for the teachers.
Teachers.
Right. Would we keep it all at one school? I mean, it's hardly, you're talking about traveling around.
You have more than, you have more than one person, so if you think there's a bunch of people you could showcase, have somebody go here and somebody go there. It takes the pressure off the teacher too, if it's only one, as opposed to an entire audience.
Well, it depends upon the day they come.
You know, and some schools are closer to other people and whatever, so.
I, that's what I think, I think we should do. The other thing is the letter to journalism, journalism teachers. I liked the letter that, that you guys developed, the one that you sent last time. The only thing is Dr. Burgwin's conversation with the setting this whole thing up. I think it's important to talk that this is, is, or in the letter, I don't know, is that it's a foundation of building a relationship between the school board and students. So, there, there's, in, in, in an idea that maybe we can share with them and they can share with us, kind of thing. So, that's, that concept seemed to be missing, but maybe that's something that Dr. Burgwin could come across, that it's more than just them covering what we're doing. It's, it's trying to build a relationship where maybe we can share with them what we do and how we do it, and what, how it is being, like the official, but also the other one.
Okay.
Is, see if there's an, to, to.
That's all part of that type of a situation, a lot of it. You know what I'm saying, that give and take, I mean, yeah.
I mean, stick around after school board meetings and talk.
Right. I just think that is kind of part of the whole process.
Maybe a sentence could be added at the end about that intent, and also be said.
To set up.
Wouldn't you take another stab at that?
Yeah, but it was great. And, and we'll just go without it.
So, that's fine with the.
Okay.
Um, that's all.
Okay. Dr. Jack?
I just wanted to say that I'm very, very pleased that the board unanimously supported the, the resolution from VSBA in Norfolk. That is, that's a power grab by General Assembly, and it, it shouldn't happen. And so, that's a very, very good thing that we unanimously approved that resolution. That means a lot.
Okay. Can we write a specific press release about that? And, I mean, separate it from the school board actions? Because normally you write a school board action, here's the school board actions. Can we write one specific for that? That would be great.
I'll do.
Sure. Just make sure everybody has on their calendar September the 10th for our workshop, VSBA workshop.
Oh, yes. Tuesday, September 10th, yes.
Tuesday, September the 10th at?
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock. And Dr. Jack and I have had a, a good conversation with Peter, and, yeah, I think he understands what we need, and we understand what we need. Or not.
Have you noticed that VSBA emails have gone out about news around state of stuff? Have you guys been given?
Yeah.
Really?
Every day.
Really? Because stuff has been missing. Maybe it's.
Missing some good stuff.
Yeah.
Yes, I love those.
Okay. If there is nothing else, then?
I move that the school board convene a closed meeting for the purpose of discussing and considering the crisis management plan pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2 dash 3711A subdivision nineteen.
Second. Motion and a second that the school board convene a closed meeting for the purpose of discussing, considering the crisis management plan pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2 dash 3711A sub, what'd you say, subsection?
Nineteen, yeah, subsection.
Subsection nineteen. I do it right once. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no, and we are in closed session.